The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing this notice on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tap into Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk for the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in rising for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please. Mr. Bishi.
Mr. Rosen.
Here.
Mr. Desai. Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here.
Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Valentino.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn. Mr. Rizzi.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Minutes?
Resolve. The Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. You want to do them separate or do they like one?
Do them separate.
We do them separate.
Second.
I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi. Mr. Rosen.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Rizzi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolve that the Board of Education approved the public session minutes of the October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Second.
I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Rosen.
Abstain.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Rizzi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Correspondence and information, I'll turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzi. There was one HIB investigation that was at Mount Horv School was unfounded or unconfirmed. Two in-school suspensions, one at Woodland and one at the middle school. And on correspondence reported to the board, three emails regarding superintendent's contract, one regarding the COVID tracker, and two regarding resoning.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight on this chilly November evening. Appreciate everyone's coming here tonight. I first wanted to congratulate our two board, two new board members, Mr. Otto, Ms. Boichtbaum, if I said that correctly, as well as reelection to Mrs. Zahn, who's not here tonight. Certainly look forward to working with all of them. There will be, we're potentially slotting a December nineteenth meeting, so if those members, if they're watching, could be on lookout for a possible invite related to New Jersey School Boards Association to help with onboarding. We certainly, certainly look forward to working with them and moving forward and onboarding them. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the Lions Club of Warren for their continued support of our families within our district. They had a very generous donation this year. It was the largest that I've ever remembered being in seven-ish years. So certainly thank you to them and all their time that went into that time and funding for that. On the agenda tonight, C one and C two, my customary welcome and congratulations to these wonderful people who will be joining us. They're joining an amazing team of staff members who we are certainly most thankful for, especially this time of year. I also want to thank Dr. Mingle, Mrs. Andrews, Mr. Heaney. I had the opportunity to present alongside of them at the New Jersey School Boards Convention on October twenty-fourth. Our time slot was on a Monday at four P M., which is a little challenging, but I was very pleasantly surprised by the number that showed up and the Q and A sessions that that endured as part of that. So my sincere thanks for allowing me to participate them and collaborate with them in that process. A few residents, shifting gears, a few residents yesterday and today reached out to me regarding pilots in the town. Just to clarify, I spoke with Mayor Sordillo very briefly just before this meeting, and we are in agreement that negotiations with the Township Committee are ongoing, and we hope to share more on this topic in the future. And that is all I have. I will turn over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzi. Just a couple of quick things. I, to concur with Mr. Rizzi on the thank you to the Lions Club. I think the number of Thanksgiving meals provided to district-associated families went up by a little bit more than double this year from last year. And we thank the Lions Club for helping with that, and thank you specifically to Mr. Rizzi, who stores all of that food over the weekend when we get it from the Lions Club and helps distribute it, which, which we did today, which was great. Just a preview, you'll hear a little bit more about this in the Finance Committee report out, but the next board meeting on December nineteenth, which is the last one of the current board calendar year. Well, as always, celebrate our outgoing board members, which is a really nice thing. Also, we'll have a, an initial discussion about twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budgeting and discussion about ongoing work in regards to school lunches. And we'll feature a performance by the Warren Middle School Chorus, which is coming off a performance at Radio City Music Hall last Friday where they opened for the very first performance by the Rockettes for this holiday season. We have a little bit of a video to show you what occurred last Friday, but also to preview what will be here on December nineteen.
At the sound of the voices, I rejoice in your sound. It is like a great big air shaking up the sky. Like the sound, like the sound, like the sound, like the sound, like the sound of the wind inside. This is winter, this is winter. This is winter, this is winter. In the night sky, in the night sky. In the night sky.
So congratulations to Mrs. Jensen and all of our students. And again, we'll have a live in-person performance next month. And that's it for me, Mr. Rizzi.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to presentation, I don't believe there is any scheduled for this evening, which leads us to discussion, which is the draft twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar. So the board has received a draft version of the calendar for us to discuss. If there's anyone who wishes to discuss any items on the calendar. Mr. Rosen, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was reviewing the calendar and whenever, whenever any district is creating its school calendar, you want it to reflect the community you serve. And we're fortunate in Warren to have families from many different backgrounds. We have a significant Anglo-Saxon population, and you see those holidays reflected in the school calendar. We have a significant Jewish population. You see that reflected in the post-school calendar, both of which are appropriate. However, we also have a significant South Asian population, but our calendar does not yet represent or reflect the holidays of Diwali or Eid. Surrounding communities that are similar to ours, including Bernard's Township, Bridgewater Raritan, Montgomery, to name a few, have recognized one or both of these holidays. And I know Mrs. Zahn, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, has been advocating for this in our school calendar for many years now, and I believe that it is well past time for us to move forward on this. So I would like to make a motion to include both Diwali and Eid as school holidays beginning in the twenty twenty-three through twenty-four school year.
There is a second, then we can have a discussion.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Valentino. So discussion. So the, thank you, Mr. Rosen. I appreciate that. I'll open the floor up. Diwali next year, I understand, is on a
Sunday.
Weekend. I don't know Eid off the top of my head, to be candid.
There might be more than one, right? I mean, we'd have to pick which.
Tradition of Eid in the spring. That's what strikes recognition. Yeah.
So, sorry, I don't know either. It's two total days. Is that correct?
Diwali would be one day and then Eid, which is the end of Ramadan, would be the second.
Okay, so then I guess that at least my mind begs the question of, we need to backfill those days with school days now.
Well, we have to, we have to fit one hundred and eighty days in somehow. So I guess the probably separate or the, maybe the second question or tale to that, should it go forward, would be do we start earlier, later?
Right.
Remove existing holidays, shorten breaks. I don't, I don't have the answers. I'm just
Yeah, but I think
Somehow we have to hit on one hundred and eighty days. I would think so, yeah.
So if the motion were to move forward, Mr. Rizzi, am I correct in assuming the administration would then incorporate that into the draft calendar and then present to us for perhaps a final vote in the December meeting?
I, I think that would be very reasonable. Yeah.
Um, if I may. So I think in the past, what I've heard is that we try to align our calendars with the high school, right? Is that correct? And the high school doesn't currently have those holidays. Is that right? So what is the, are there other considerations around busing or that sort of thing to be thinking through or? Yeah, I'm not saying I don't support it. I just want to make sure we're thinking comprehensively.
I will ask administration that question, but my understanding would be since we operate tiered busing, there potentially could be additional costs, and that's, I guess, up to the bus company. If we, if we were to go the route of breaking from the tradition of trying as best we can to align to the high school schedule. And I personally don't think that's a reason not to do it myself, but it's something to go in eyes wide open to make sure that we're all understanding if there is a, an additional cost. I can't think of any others off the top of my head, but you have to talk to me.
I'd have to ask Scott DeLaman specifically, but in other, in other parts of my career, I've never seen that be a problem for one or two days. What I, what I would say is sometimes the problems are our younger students depend on their older siblings who are at the high school.
Childcare.
Childcare.
Do we know if the high school board has passed their calendar for next year?
So the calendar, the calendar that you have is alignment with the calendar that they're contemplating. It doesn't mean that it can't change. I don't know if they've actually voted on it. Somebody else at the table might know. But this is a line. It, it does not appear, at least as of two weeks ago that they were having.
That would be the easiest solution, I think, right? Is that they agreed to recognize the holidays on the same basis as we did to keep childcare, busing, all that other stuff.
And there has been, I think, a significant push to the high school, both from students and staff to recognize those holidays as well. So my personal opinion, without being, you know, speaking on behalf of the high school board, is I think it is something that will happen eventually. And I think us being ahead of the curve is a good thing.
I like being ahead of the curve. Any other, Mr. Bishi?
If there's anything with the, the union contractor, the teacher's contract, if we have to go beyond get added a, or start a day early.
The only item in the contracts around the calendar is that they have a right to review it and make comments, but there's nothing that would affect this.
I'll try and figure out the proper way to phrase this, and this is not to say that I'm not supporting the motion, but I think we do need to give thought to that if we do pass this, does it open up for other holidays that are not currently on the calendar to become topics for discussion? And at what point do we say yes or no? And that's more rhetorical, I think. I'm not expecting folks to answer at this point, but it is something that crossed my mind. We have to have a certain number of school days. Not saying that the holidays aren't important. They are. But I think there's likely other holidays that aren't currently in the school calendar that others feel are important too. And if those come to this board as well, we have a decision that we need to make again. Keeping in mind that, again, we have to have a certain number of school days per state mandate to operate.
Agreed. Yeah. Valid point.
Does anybody know how members of that population feel about this? Maybe in years past, when it's been considered to be added, but did again, off the cuff, you know, was that something that people were vocal without wanting to add? Or do we have a sense of?
I think, sorry. I was just gonna say, I think a lot of the advocacy has been at the high school level so far from members of the community, less so here.
Right.
But if we were to extrapolate from that, it ups.
Any other questions, clarifications? Mr. Hagel, do you have a clear understanding of the motion?
I'll read what I wrote.
Sure.
Motion to add Diwali and Eid to the school calendar, to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar. It's very is that correct, Mr. Rosen?
Yeah. Any clarifications?
Two, certainly. It'll be two days. Well, although for this year, yeah, this year, since one is on Sunday, I don't know when we, did we figure out in a second?
Right. Well, it's, it's a two-day holiday. So it would probably be one school day this year, or in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Potentially two in a future year at some point, just like with Rashashan and Nupkabor. Sometimes it's one day, sometimes it's two days that actually fall in school day. Same, it would be the same.
So this is just to envision a version of the calendar with those two days being added, but we still, the public will still have the opportunity to see it. We'll still also take a separate vote on it at a future date. Okay.
Just a question. As part of that separate vote, will it be accompanied by, we are a proposal to start school earlier and have it go later, take away two days during the year that we would typically have? Are those two going to be part and parcel, or are those separate?
Yeah, so my, my read of the way we would respond to this resolution is the way Mr. Rosen described it, which is you're, you basically are directing the administration to provide you an option that does this.
Okay.
And then you consider, I can say without having looked at all the intricacies, I, I wouldn't imagine moving it any earlier this school year because it is already before Labor Day. There's more room at the, on the back end than there is on the front end.
Okay. Thanks.
And so, Dr. Mingle, just to clarify, it's what we would be voting on in December is just a final version of the calendar that includes the reflection of however you move the days to accommodate those two holidays.
Yes. And, and I can make sure that you all have that. We have a month between now and that meeting that you have it with plenty of time to, to look at it, give feedback. The current draft is on the district website, so we could add that to the district website as well.
Can we also have an understanding of any impact of the busing? Just, just a sanity check of like, not a big deal, or I just want to make sure.
I can do that.
And then lunches too, right? For those days? Or is that not part of the?
The way lunches work is we just, we just don't offer lunch on, on, on school holidays.
Right. I'm talking about the two days that we would, obviously, we need to account for the two other days that would be put onto the school calendar in terms of lunches that weren't originally on the calendar.
You'd have one hundred and eighty days.
This is next year. We're, we're talking about next year, so we haven't established that yet.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else?
Seeing none. We have a roll call? Sure, this is to add those two, two holidays to the school calendar. Mr. Bishi. Mr. Rosen.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio. Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
And Mr. Rizzi.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Is there any other items for discussion with regards to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four draft calendar? Seeing none. Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. Brings us to committee reports. We will start with the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee. Ms. Keller.
Yep. We met on October seventeenth. We reviewed the district assessment data, which was presented that same evening to the full board and the public. We also discussed the October Teacher in Service that focused on SEL. And then we went over the kindergarten curriculum with the emphasis on a play-based learning curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Finance, Operations, and Security Committee. Mrs. Zahn typically reads these out. I will attempt to do a good as job as she does. I reserve the right for her to correct me when she returns. The Finance, Operations, and Security Committee, not off to a good start, met on Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P M. Topics of discussion, and the board has a copy of all of these, included a summary for summer fund, summary to date of the two thousand and twenty-two financials enrollment trend data. We also, also spoke of referendum project updates, including the HVAC upgrades for Central School, Warren Middle School, and Woodland School. Those are on tonight's agenda as item B nine, as well as the Woodland Security Vestibule that is on tonight's agenda as in, as B ten. We did discuss preschool update regarding the tuition for two thousand and twenty-four, increasing that from seventy-five. increasing that from seventy-five hundred dollars to eighty-five hundred dollars. The committee supported moving that to a full board full approval, which is on tonight's agenda as item B eleven. In conjunction with that, there was also uh an increase to, uh, or, excuse me, a recommendation from the committee uh to begin um a change to the courtesy busing for preschool to a price of one hundred and fifty dollars per month, which is also on tonight's agenda as B eleven. We had a, an in-depth discussion about uh food services. Um, there was an update to previous feasibility study, and I was not at the previous meeting, so I, I hope I'm representing this correctly. Um, the, there, there was a recommendation from our architects for hydraulic and hydraulics, hy-, hydrologic analysis of the area, um, where one of the options uh was, was to be considered. That was if a kitchen were to be um put in that location. There was also a new option presented, uh, which is a kind of a modification from one of the previous options. There's a question about state aid for this, whether it was, would be a referendum or through uh rod grants, which are regular operating district, district grants, that we do not have an answer to that at this time. Uh, with regards to the location, there was also um, uh, we discussed pedestrian safety, student safety, worker safety with regards to uh vehicles moving in and out of the area. There was, as the board saw, there was a food service decision matrix also in the um, in the, in the meeting agenda and meeting minutes, a very simple two-by-two that had potential outcomes. Um, nothing set in stone yet. This is all up for discussion, and I'll get to that in a little bit. Uh, National School Lunch Program came up, uh, question, uh, do any schools require a National School Lunch Program aligned lunch next, next year? The answer is yes, we do have schools that meet the threshold. Uh, as a follow-up to that, the New Jersey rules for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four increased the amount of money a student's family can earn to qualify. So we feel confident the current numbers we have are likely or will increase, and potentially more schools could be uh included in that qualification for National School Lunch Program. Trying to get through this, um, resources, uh, that's, I think, from the previous meeting. Shifting gears, uh, investment opportunities, there was a proposal from a um investment bank that we use to change how things are done, which would, would then that result that that would be an increase in interest payments to the district, which the, the committee supported moving that forward to the bull, full board, that is on tonight's agenda as item B twelve. Uh, and then in a previous finance committee meeting, there was discussion about uh having a meeting of the whole board. Uh, we decided to embed that, as Dr. Mingle referenced earlier in his remarks, embed that into the December nineteenth meeting uh af-, after the business agenda, so the entire, so the full board can have a discussion related to that, and we are looking specifically to include, but not limited to, the kitchen slash lunch program as well as the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Um, I believe that is it. So we will move on to uh personal and negotiate, negotiations. I don't believe there was any update for that currently, which leads us to the ad hoc planning for elementary growth committee, which met on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Whoever wants it. So the, uh, the meeting on November seventh was the final review of the rezoning proposal, which was uh presented to the public the following week. All that information's on the website at this point, but that was the final street zones, which are on the agenda tonight. And an update on the communication strategy, which was stakeholder meetings, plans for PTO meetings, focus groups, faculty meetings, letters, parent sessions, and the FAQ. Um, all of that has been done since then, it's all on the district website, but that was the final review of the committee, which led to the recommendation to the board. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to public commentary, this is the first of two public commentary for this evening. This is for agenda items only. If any member of the public wishes to address the board and provide comments and feedback, you'll have three minutes to do so. If you could kindly state your name and address, group affiliation, if appropriate, the board would very much appreciate your feedback. Uh, we attempt, it is um, just for clarity, we attempt to provide information, post comments if there is an opportunity to do so, and if it makes sense. So we try not to interrupt the three minutes that you have to, um, to interrupt you. So if there's, we will start in the room this evening. Uh, if there's any members of the public in the room, kindly raise your hand. And we do have a microphone just to help those who are on the Zoom session at home as well. Yes, please. Actually, would you mind going to the podium? That'd be great. Thank you.
Start us off. My name is Sarah Byrne, and I reside at one sixty-seven Mountain View Road with my husband and four children. I want to thank the board and the rezoning committee for recognizing the need to adjust the enrollments of our schools in order to maintain our mission of equity and equality. You've created a comprehensive and thoughtful plan, but I will cut to the chase here. It's not possible for you to have considered everything. The making of any plan requires revisions and certainly amendments to make the plan better. The current grandfathering segment of the proposal, of the proposal states that families may choose to allow the rising fifth-grade children to remain in the school that they have attended for the previous five years. As an educator since two thousand and four, I know, as you all know, that in order for kids to learn anything at all, they must feel safe in a familiar setting, secure with the adults charged with their education, stable in the lasting relationships that they have made, supported by staff members, specials and specialized teachers, and connected with both their peers and grownups with whom they interact daily. They need this in order to rise to challenging themselves to be better readers, writers, and mathematicians. I want to thank the board for recognizing that this is the very best we can offer for our children. However, to call this a choice is saying that families may choose to send their fifth graders to their current school or their rezoned school. This is unfortunately a gross misnomer. The plan has missed a vital piece in that you have not provided a bus for students to remain in the school that has housed them for what will be five years. You are demanding that families who have two working parents or families where there is a single parent move their children from where you know they will be best placed. While to someone who does not work out of the home for money or who works from home, this may not seem consequential. I can tell you that for those families, the bus is everything. The numbers are there to warrant making a route to pick up and drop off every fifth grader and his or her sibling who wants to stay at their current school. A bit of creative thinking will ensure that every child has a place on the bus. You have not given families a choice. You have forced their hand into putting these children through more undue stress at their very tender ages. Consistency to a child's education is paramount, yet you propose three schools in three years, starting when my daughter is nine years old. In addition to the fact that this will mean for me that I will have four children in four schools, I have to recognize the future of this program. We will have an influx of children to our community in a very short period of time. I see this as only a way to enrich my children's growth as citizens. The richness of diversity creates well-rounded human beings. This is how I see the future for my family. But I see beyond my own backyard and look to how we will actually be the one Warren you are hoping to promote. We know we will have to rezone again in a few years. The new families I hope to welcome to our town may have one working parent, may well have two working parents. Perhaps and quite likely, they will be dependent on the bus system as well. How can we truly advocate for and stand behind the motto of equity and equality when we do not put in a place that, put in place a plan that promotes the fullness of what a Warren education means? There is a need for a transition here, perhaps that will look like one year or two. I hope you will not force my two kids, my two younger ones, to attend different schools when that is not the best thing for either one of them. I do not like the idea of kicking the can down the line, but given that we will see a rezoning again for some potentially twice in their elementary schooling, we have to get better at it. We have to recognize that transitions from home, I'm sorry, that, sorry. We have to recognize, recognize that transitions and learning how to be great at them is also part of a rich education. In a time when every move of school boards is scrutinized, to keep this plan as is would be detrimental to our kids. The optics would show an exclusive mindset rather than an inclusive body of schools. Rather than show the Warren I thought I moved to seven years ago, this hard line would display that not all family variations are welcome. I shudder to think that this would be our aim. Opportunity exists here to do the right thing, to do this right, and that lies in transitioning. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any, anyone else who wishes to write comments? Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm Brian Smith. I live at Tendell and Court. I have a first grader and a kindergartner. Um, I sent a letter to you, Dr. Mingle, and I think the, the rest of the board might have gotten it. So I think you get the gist of my comments, but just to um summarize what I had said in the letter. Um, my kids go to the Woodland School. Um, and in summary, you know, Warren as a community should be dealing with this new housing and new influx of students together to determine a plan that would be less disruptive to the students and teachers. Um, I fear that Warren is getting a brunt of, of the new students and families that are coming in, um, which is totally fine, but does that disrupt the teachers and students' learning? Um, all of these kids will, at some point in time, go to the same uh middle school that we're in. And I worry that the kids who go to Mount Horab and um ALT will not have this, that disruption. Um, and that their learning will be business as usual. When the kids in Woodland are going to be very disrupted with new kids coming in, there's new seating, there's new lesson plans. Um, and, and, you know, we're going to learn that when they get to, when they get to the middle school. Um, I don't understand how there wasn't a proposal that would spread out the new families. Um, you know, we're lucky enough to have four schools here. Um, and I think that if we could divide, you know, this in, influx um across the different schools, I think that would lessen this, the disruption. I think that's uh the gist of my comments there.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any additional comments from the room? I'm sorry, I didn't say, yes, please.
Hi, my name is Nora Curran, and I'm a sophomore at Watchon Hills, and I'm the co-founder of the Interfaith Coalition, which is the coalition that's been pushing to get Eden Dewali off his school holidays. And I just want to say thank you for your vote today because we've been trying for the last, over a year now, to get these holidays off, and we've gotten a lot of um pushback from the board. And basically, they've just been telling us that once the middle schools do it, then they'll do it. And so this is really great to see. Um, and at the end of last year, I hand-surveyed over two hundred, over twenty percent of the, over four hundred, I think, over twenty percent of the school population. And the um over, I mean, about whether or not they would like for these school holidays to be off next year. And the results were that ni-, over ninety-eight percent of the students wanted these days off. So I know some of you were asking whether or not it was something that students wanted. So yeah, it, it definitely is, but thank you so much for voting today.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming out. Yes, please.
Hi, Shannon, Q sub one six six, dear run. And I, just a follow-up comment. Not only the students are thrilled, but the parents are too. The community is thrilled. Um, just as we have background, um, there is, there was community petition, over a thousand signatures, um, student survey, um, community organizations, churches. Um, this is how we have a unified community. This is what D E I, meaningful D E I looks like. And so I think the phrase "ahead of the curve" was mentioned. You guys are leaders. This is what leadership looks like. Every single one of you, thank you so, so much. It means the world to the students and to the families, because when you have that day off to celebrate with your family, makes a stronger family unit, makes a stronger community, right? We don't want to lose that. And I can tell you, as somebody who works in the corporate world, it's what we look for. We want diverse candidates. We want people who are connected to their faith and their identity. It makes for good business. And so you're doing something that's benefiting the students, whether they are of that ethnicity or not, because companies benefit, you know, communities benefit. So thank you upon thank you. I know that, you know, there's some work ahead. I will tell you, the community is more than willing to work with you guys as you try to figure out days and which holidays and so on. Please reach out to us. Happy to work with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Any additional comments in the room? If we could go to Zoom, if, if you hand up, I'm sorry. We'll get more lively. Um, if Zoom, if you could kindly use the raise your hand feature. This is for the first of two public commentary sessions. This is for agenda items. Seeing none back in the room. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, please go ahead. iPhone thirteen Pro Max.
Hi, my name is Kelly Thomasy at twelve Gentry Drive. Thank you for all the hard work you put into the Rezone project thus far. I appreciate you giving the option for the twenty-four incoming fifth graders at Central to stay for their final sixth year of elementary school. Given all the COVID-related challenges these children had to face and overcome, I feel the stability to maintain their home away from home is what is needed to continue to help these kids get back on track. Since this is the time to think through all the details related to the Rezone, I am requesting you reconsider the younger sibling decision. Please allow the thirteen incoming fifth graders at Central School with younger siblings to stay at Central with their siblings for their fifth grade year. And for those fifth graders with a fourth grade sibling, I think they should be able to stay two years. Uh, Dr. Mingle explained the reason for this decision. Um, the reason the decision was made was because at some point you need to rip the Band-Aid off and rezone everyone. I totally get that. However, this separation creates a hardship for these twenty-six kids and their families. It's a logistical nightmare to have multiple children in different elementary schools for various reasons. This is unnecessary stress put on the children as well as their families. Projection State Central School will increase from three hundred to four hundred students in twenty twenty-five, and I'm requesting to keep twenty-six existing kids in the school in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, which is one year prior. The school has the space and resources for these children. Please don't recreate another transition for these kids to have to overcome. They've already been through enough challenges in their young lives. I also believe many families lose their choice to keep their incoming fifth grader at Central when you remove their bus. I know it may have been done for, it may have been done twenty years ago. It, it was done twenty years ago this way, but there are many more families with two full-time working parents these days, and those families truly rely on the bus. Just to recap, please consider allowing younger siblings to stay with their older fifth-grade sibling only next year or two years for a fourth grader, and try to fine busing for the, those who stay. Please do not set these children up for more setbacks and emotional distress. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. So anyone else on Zoom who wished us to provide comments? This is the first of two public comment sessions for agenda items. Anyone in the room? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public, first of two public commentary?
Motion closed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post sentence, the first of two, public com-, commentary is closed. Dr. Mingle, are there any? Ideas to share?
But no.
Items for board consideration in action. Are there any items any board member wishes to discuss and or pull for a separate vote?
Mr. President, could we pull item C two for separate vote?
Charlie two.
Uh, also B five?
B five. Any other items? Any other items?
Just had a question on B nine.
Sure. HVAC?
Yeah, just, I guess the question is. Right? We went out to bid and I guess our estimate was too optimistic and we couldn't find anybody to bid at that price, right? If I'm thinking inflation, I'm thinking we just couldn't find somebody to do more at that. Did a price, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, so this was a bid for HVAC replacement and or upgrades at three of our schools. Right now with all the money that's been put towards schools and other public entities for specifically for HVAC. These projects are coming at much higher than they were budgeted. This, you have to remember that this referendum was budgeted several years ago. We only had one bidder bid and that bid was well in excess of our budget. So we're going to do it again. And in doing that, we're going to make some changes to the bid in a way that we hopefully both attract more bidders and make the bidding process more flexible. So hopefully we can accept the one next set of bids.
Any other items? I'd like to pull B one for myself for a separate vote. Sorry, we're making this hard. Any additional items, poll, discussion? Seeing none? Let's, we can discuss it as we vote it, I would suggest. If there's discussion.
So a motion to approve items A one through A five, B two through B four and B six through B twelve, C one and C three through C twelve and D one. I think that's.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please. All right, just to repeat, we're voting on A one through A five, B two to B four, B six to B twelve, C one, C three to C twelve and D one, which means we're excluding B one, B five and C two from this vote. Mr. Bishi.
Yeah. Mr. Frozen.
Yes.
This is Damagio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
The motion's passed seven zero. B one, I don't believe there's any discussion, just requested a separate vote.
Motion to move item B one for consideration?
Second.
Call the roll, Mr. Bishi. Mr. Frozen?
Yes.
This is Damagio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Abstain?
Motion passes six zero with one extension. Item B, excuse me, B five, is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, living on Fairfield Avenue, I think I might be the only board member from the Plainfield Gardens area, which is entirely zoned for Woodland currently. I've heard from a lot of different families, neighbors about their concerns. Not just about the disruption that will come from rezoning, which I think we all knew would happen and is a necessary part of rezoning, but from the disproportionate effect on Woodland families. And so what, what I would like to discuss is the ability to provide and the feasibility to provide a similar option to stay at Woodland or any school for families that would agree to waive busing as we offered for the fifth graders, perhaps third through fifth. Knowing that those were the students that over the past three years have suffered the most disruption from COVID, starting even in kindergarten. And so trying to provide as many opportunities for them to have some stability in their final years of elementary school, I think would be important, particularly because while no school remains completely untouched from rezoning, there is a significant impact on Woodlands and on that neighborhood in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Crossen. Any other board members?
Can you just repeat what you said? In terms of, in terms of, no, not the whole thing. I'll, I'll give you clarity.
I could spark notes.
No, no, no. I just want to make sure I understand it. So grades three through five, the ability to, for those kids to remain at Woodland and waive busing, is, am I regurgitating that correctly?
Correct, because the current, I believe, the current offer to families is for fifth grade families that if they waive busing, they can stay at their existing school for the last year. So what I am proposing for, for discussion or for feedback to the administration is to make that same offer to fourth and third grade families, knowing that those are the families that, and those are the students that have experienced some of the most disruption from COVID during their educational experience.
Okay, thank you. And then the, I don't know, the proposal for how long? If you're in third grade, right? How long those kids would stay? Is that for their, their tenure at the school or is that one year, two years? I guess what's the?
They, I, I would propose they'd be able to finish out their elementary experience at that school.
Okay.
Particularly because I believe if I remember looking at the documents correctly, as the additional housing units come online, the capacity at Woodland will begin to have an effect on the capacity at Woodland. But for the first one to two to three school years, there's more flexibility in terms of the number of students that could potentially attend to that school.
Okay, thanks.
So clarification. Woodland only, not Central? Not, not.
No, I'm, I'm proposing that third through fifth graders in the district be able to.
All, all, all school. I'm sorry, I missed that.
But the, the majority of, a bulk of the impact, though not exclusively, but a bulk of the impact is for Woodland families, of course, knowing that we, a lot of us are moving to Central, myself included, although he's still a month old, so we have some time.
So I thought I could be wrong. I don't claim to have this stuff. I do have a life. I have more than memorizing zoning numbers, but it's about a hundred students that are moving from Central to Mount Harb. Forty-four students that are moving from Woodland to Central. So I think there's, yes, we have, going through this process, have fully expected since we started this last fall, right, all the emotions and, you know, sentiment that occurred tonight. We've seen through some of the correspondence. I think the impact is to say that a certain school, there's varying levels of impact. Right? So for Mount Harb families, you talk to them, their population's going to increase by almost fifty percent in one year. For Central, they're, those who are left behind, they're losing a hundred students. Woodland has forty-four moving to Central. So I just want to be, I don't want to paint a picture that the, the feeling, although it's varying levels of, you know, disruption, I think every school is feeling, three of the four schools are feeling something, right? So I just want to be really careful that we're not saying like it's only a single school that's failing it. And I think we have to really think about the decision we made to allow for a whole year of transition this year, right? Because I think there was a feeling that maybe we do this rezoning for the current year, this active year. And it was a deliberate decision to hold off a whole year to allow for all of these, you know, all these feelings, all these things that everybody's going through, to allow this whole year for that period of adjustment. So, and I think it was also understood too, through being on the committee, that, you know, the growth of the populations is going to get more and more exponential, exponential. And by holding off a year, we're really putting some situations at risk, right? We just have so many kids and class sizes and everything sort of evolving over time that we're not getting ahead of it. But that was the risk, I think, that we sort of took on to allow for this extra year of abnormality and adjustment, right? So I, I'm a little, if we allow for third through fifth to be grandfathered in, to have the option of, you know, being driven or whatever that looks like. First of all, I think that's a dramatic number of students that this administration and this committee over the last six months have been working to figure out this plan. So, you know, I think since April, probably since we approved this, there has been remapping, looking at siblings, looking at the impact and coming up with this. So this was not done in haste, it was not done, right? It was, it was very, although there are many people who are not happy with it, it has been done very strategically, very deliberately to minimize the impact, right, to some. And to sort of look at, you know, what, what are the scenarios for grandfathering? What are the options of transportation? And I think this is the, the plan that they came up with. So if we were to now allow grandfathering a third through fifth graders across all four schools, you know, what does that do to the numbers? What does that do to class sizes? What does that do to busing? What does that do to the K through second grade parents who are like, what about my kid? What about the K through second graders, right? They were impacted as well. So I, I just, I support this plan because I, I trust that this was done with empathy and with thinking about the impact to everybody. And although I cannot put myself in the shoes of the people who are impacted, like the people who spoke up tonight, I do believe that this is the plan that most sort of accommodates all of the different needs of the different students.
Thank you. So, I don't know, I wasn't in the committee where, where this did or did not come up. So my, we do have, I think, I'm not going to quote it because I don't know it that well. We do have an existing policy with regards to if a student moves and they can stay at a certain school, if they're in fifth or eighth grade, is that correct? So what was part of the spirit of what we're doing now to, did that policy come into play in terms of the spirit of, maybe that's a, maybe those, it's probably a specific question, but considering we have existing policy and existing practice, specifically outlining the fifth graders at schools during a very similar, well, during a transition, I shouldn't say similar, that's, but that's when a family actually moves within district, they have the option to keep their child out of school if they, if they provide transportation, I think is the spirit of the policy. And I hope I'm characterizing that correctly. That's been in place for years, as far as I know. So it feels like the current rezoning gels with that. And ma- maybe those are not exactly the same, I acknowledge that, but it's the changing aspect of students and how we try to keep them or don't keep them in the same school for that transition period when they, when they move, so. Dr. Mingle, do you have any? Oh, the other, actually, I thought, I'm sorry. And I don't know this, class size has me thinking that we could potentially be in a situation, class size and potentially classrooms. Although I don't know the specifics nearly as well as Ms. Keller, you seem to know numbers well. That would, that's something that I guess I'd want to look at further. So, Dr. Mingle, if you have any comments?
Sure. So I don't want to try to guess a feasibility study on the spot as far as what the impact would be. Because the work, to Ms. Keller's point, that our demographer did since April, when the board approved the plan that's here, was focused specifically only on the fifth graders staying. So I don't, I, I did a, I just looked up really quick. Eighty-one of the one hundred forty-four students who are zoned to move are in the grades that you're talking about. So that's a lot of the students. I don't know what that, what all that means. The demographic study that was published with the April vote last year did have a chart in it of at what capacity each school would be at if things weren't done. I don't have that at, at the top of my head, but the demographers' statements to our committee work was in twenty-three, twenty-four, backing up, we could probably get through twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four gets very challenging. Twenty-four, twenty-five becomes impossible. And the variable that we can't predict is when additional housing units start to occupy. We do know, and I think this was shared at both parent information sessions for people who are in the rezoned areas, we do know that as of twenty-one days ago, at the beginning of November, we were about six percent over projections for this year as far as student enrollment goes. We're seeing more students coming out of the housing that's opening than was projected. I can't predict that that'll be the case in future housing, of course, but that's just some information to, to color the conversation. I can't answer a, a full feasibility question on things we haven't studied. I don't know if there's other, oh, to your question about, so the policy right now, it is a little bit of a different circumstance, but I see the connection you're making. If a student is currently in fifth grade and the family moves within the school year, we allow them to stay if they can provide transportation. Whether or not that was the reason everybody thought that that made sense, I don't know, but that is our existing practice under those circumstances. I don't know if that answers, I didn't have specific questions that people asked, but I think that's the, the general gist.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle.
And just to confirm, Ms. Keller's numbers were right. So I do want to clarify that as far as the impact, I don't want to downplay the impact on any school. However, Woodland, it's for, there are forty-four students scheduled to be rezoned to Central. Central has a hundred, a hundred students leaving and forty-four students coming in, which is a very significant impact on Central. Mount Horv obviously has a hundred students coming in, plus we have a preschool switch. So as far as total numbers of kids, while I, I hear the, the concern from Woodland, there are even more kids affected at Central. And so I just want to keep that in mind if there are any other decisions or recommendations made.
Thanks, Dr. Mingle. Any additional comments or questions from the board? I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, sorry. I'll ask another rhetorical question, which apparently I seem to be good at. I, I, I think when we think about the rezoning, if we are going to relook at it, the two questions that come to my mind have to do with time and money. Do we have the time and the money to be able to reconsider what is up for vote this evening? I, I don't know that answer, but I know there was an awful lot of both put into the current rezoning proposal, if you will. So those two items concern me if we're to bring this back through for another, another discussion. Not saying that what you're proposing is, is wrong. I, I just don't have the numbers on the proposed grades three through five for all schools if guardians provide their own busing and what that would look like and what it would do to the current rezoning. So it's, it's, it's a big question mark for me simply because we don't have the numbers, we haven't put the time in to be able to craft those numbers. And then what would be the financial impact on the district?
I think your comment and time is spot on. We, this board in April, March, April, spring? April kind of went down this path to, to land where the, the current recommendation is. Rezoning, redistricting, neighborhood schools, no neighborhood schools. So we're in six, seven months to get here. That there was another seven months, Dr. Mingle said, to twenty-three, twenty-four could be a challenging year. Don't let me misrepresent. I think we're, we're in a very unfortunate situation of a tough decision now or potentially a very bad situation in the future. That's my personal read and if I'm wrong.
I mean, I think there was some guiding principles that went into this whole process, right? One of them was having, minimizing the impact as much as possible, but it was also understood, I think it was in the evil timeframe, that this was going to be a large change. I think we were pretty transparent about that. What the details of those changes were, obviously was not released until the last few months. But everybody understood that it was going to be a large change. They were going to be as minimal. We were going to be as minimal impact as possible, but to be able to be sustainable. And I'm also not quite sure, I'm hearing that rezoning is going to happen again. I, I am, maybe Dr. Mingle can comment on that. Um, we have a five-year, uh, sort of set of assumptions based on the current new development. So if there's new buildings that happen, that's out of our control, obviously. We have to address those as they, as they come. But, you know, in, in that April timeframe, when we approved this rezoning for next year, we knew eyes wide open that it was going to be large. It wasn't going to be a couple of streets here and there. Now we know the details of it. But, you know, I, I think the committee has throughout the whole process, made decisions knowing that there was going to be impact, taking those impacts seriously, doing things deliberately, thinking through things carefully. And, you know, I trust that if there was an option through the last five plus months, that the team has been working on this street, this street, this street, looking at siblings, looking at busing. I am sure if grandfathering in third through fifth graders was an option, they would have done it. I think what they're saying is this is what we need this plan to be to adequately address the growth. My concern to echo Mr. Weinstein's is the longer we sort of keep going back to the drawing board more than it has done in the last six months, it just is diminishing the amount of time that we can actually work on the transition and the implementation and all the, you know, really great ideas that the different, you know, staffs and members of administration of the different schools are working through to be able to have this be smooth and all the things that I think parents care about, that they, that it is, that it is smooth, that it's a welcoming committee, that they are, that they are feeling like they are, you know, sort of that belonging aspect that, 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 that seamless for them. That window gets smaller and smaller, the more we start reassessing stuff.
Yeah, yes, please, Dr. Mingle.
So the, the demographer's commitment in his report to us was that the proposed zones are sustainable and should not require further rezoning for the foreseeable future. What he defined that as was next year's kindergartners through their fifth grade year with the very important caveat, which I know I said at the parent meetings as well, that if additional housing is approved in the next several years, that throws things, uh, into a place that we can't predict. I didn't want to come in on one other thing, which is not really about this vote, but it came up in some of the public commentary, and it was a, a big focus of conversation when I was at both Woodland and Central around basic, how, how can we support the very real challenges that people talked about when you have siblings in two different places? Um, so one of the things that I can commit to with our leadership team is working to get the announcements about bus routes out earlier than one week before the first day of school, which is our typical, because there is a conflict between Alphabet's policies on when they allow people to enroll for before and aftercare, which while maybe not as good a solution as transportation, is something that could help some families. So that's something that we can do. Uh, we're also, we can also be sure to expand those opportunities. So Alphabet may typically require something like a, you know, you have to commit to an entire day of the week for the entire school year. Uh, there are options we can use internally to provide drop off and, uh, pick up support for people in that situation. Uh, there's a neighboring district that did that this year at very low cost of the district, and it provided for families because their schools are all at the same time. So there are some solutions there, while not as good perhaps as busing, better than not having some solution there. So that's, those are two, two things we can commit to and, um, we will make sure that the exact details of those are available to the families who have to make that decision prior to any deadlines that come as far as when we need you to commit by. So uh, we've been going through the feedback from people filling out the survey. That's information we can definitely get back out to the forty-one families and, well, the thirty-some odd families where there are siblings involved. So again, not a perfect solution, but something that can make it a little bit better.
Good, Dr. Mingle. Mr. Bishi, yes.
From a money perspective, I guess it's, it's busing with the money be, but you had said time, Mr. Weinstein, and, and money. I guess the money would be busing. And then the, the, the number of students that are being grandfathered, we don't know yet, right? Or we don't know, of, of the fifth graders.
We know how many are eligible.
Eligible, we don't know how many, actually. And if we were to expand it to the other two classes, we don't know what that number would be either.
Yeah, maybe we have to go through the same exercise.
Yes. Yeah, right, exactly. And we haven't asked for the fifth graders.
Correct, right, right.
Just clarifying.
No, yeah, that's how, I mean, bu- busing in and of itself, this board knows is a very complex item. And, and we have targets of how much time we would like to see kids on, not on a school bus, actually is what it is about, not on a school bus. Longer rides is generally this boards in the past have not supported longer rides on buses. Any further discussion for B five? I'll make a motion to move item B five. Could we have a roll call? Sure. Just to clarify, Mr. Baze, um, with the motion and Ms. Keller with the second confirmed. All right, roll call, Mr. Bishi. Mr. Crowson.
No.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Baze.
Yes.
Motion passes five, one. Next item is.
C two.
C two. So any discussions? Separate vote? I'll make a motion to move item C two. Right, I, Mr. Bishi with the motion, Mrs. DiMaggio with a second, call the ball. Mr. Baze, I'm sorry.
We look alike.
I was looking at Mr. Baze's name because he's first on the list. Mr. Baze. Um, call the roll, Mr. Baze. Mr. Bishi, oh my goodness. All right, all good. Mr. Crowson.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Abstained.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Baze.
Yes.
All right, let's see. Motion passes five, zero with one abstention.
I believe that's all.
That is everything, yep.
Report consideration and action. Let's move on to unfinished business. Seeing none, we will move on to new business. Seeing none, we will move on to public commentary. This is the second opportunity for a public comment to the board. Members of the public could kindly state their name and address. You'll have three minutes to address the board. It will start in the room. If there's anyone in the room who wishes to provide public comments. Yes, please.
My name is Sarah Byrne. I live at one sixty-seven Mountain View Road um, with my four children who you have now adversely impacted. The adjustment period only happens when you know you are moving or staying. We got the map seven days ago. Not seven months ago, which is the time during which you had to decide on this. Woodland has forty new students this year and forty will move to Central. Currently, Mount Horv's population over the next two years will not increase by fifty percent, but by one hundred percent. Central will get forty new and lose one hundred. So we actually will have the biggest impact. We're losing a third of our population. Our members will be fifty percent different next year. Waving busing does not help those families, nor does, nor does it allow for adjustment nor transition. I appreciate that you said you wanted to look at things further, Mr. Baze, but you voted yes for a plan that does not work. We overwhelmingly, when the public survey was put out for upper and lower schools, overwhelmingly voted against it. Now you have essentially put those families through that process. It is sustainable for five years, but we have only been given the details last Monday. We had the opportunity to do it right this time around. There is nothing smooth about this. You can give me the bus routes ahead of time, but you cannot give me a bus. You have not thought creatively. You have not tried to adjust for the families adversely affected by this. The cost to the district would be the same because there's the same number of students who require a bus. I'm sure that most students and their parents would not mind a longer bus ride if they got a bus ride. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the room who wishes to provide comments? Is there anyone on Zoom? Just to share comments with the board, if you could kindly use the raise your hand feature. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the second public commentary?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose abstentions. Second public commentary is now closed. Ms. Keller, if you would.
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four dash eleven, from its Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters? Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to a closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement and or negotiations related to it. Action will not be taken upon return of public session. The length of the meetings anticipated to be approximately thirty minutes and be further resolved. The minutes of this closed session being in public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All those in favor? I opposed abstentions. The board is in executive. Opposed, absentions. The board is in executive.
What happened? We have to figure it out forever.
The meeting is when you lose the form.
Motion to return to public session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the board is back in public session. Motion. Sorry. Happy Thanksgiving. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you everyone.
Thanks everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.